All right, this is the Towne-Carver Office and Planning of Community Development Planning Board Meeting of November 7th, 2012. It's about 7:10 and we're in meeting room four this evening. If we could all stand please to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, other business this evening. We have a Rocky Meadow development. We see the plans Form B.
Yes, this is killing my filing system, I want you to know. This is about the 10th proposal for this property. I'm exaggerating. Probably about the 5th, I think. Form B, for Kevin especially, with the Form B, it's part of the subdivision control law. There's no public hearing necessary. The planning board has 45 days to make comments or it's deemed approved. Approval of a Form B really doesn't carry anything with it. When the subdivision control law was enacted in the 50s, it was kind of a way to have informal meeting with a developer who wanted to subdivide and kind of flush out all the issues. That was the intent of it. Now it's got other intents probably. You know, I was telling one of the butters, they're not really talking to me, so I'm not sure what we're doing here. They're not here. They have every right to do a Form B, so here we are. I have tentatively scheduled a technical review committee meeting for this, which we do on November 29th at 10:00. And then I would bring our comments to you on the 4th. That's what I would like to do. We have 45 days. There's no hearings, so I don't need to set anything. It's a three-lot subdivision. They're showing two lots, I mean, two buildings. I mean, we all know this property had nauseam. There's a lot of theories of what's going on. I would wish I could espouse some of them to you, but I don't really know. And they also have a solar project that's been approved. And they've had other Form Bs and subdivision plans in front of you, and birth removal and property being sold. I'm not going to say much more because I really don't know.
Okay.
So I guess I don't really need anything in front of my eyes other than to take a look at it, be prepared on the 4th. I'll have a memo for you from the department. This was also sent to Sean Martin. Monies were deposited for him to take a look at it. And he's going to, you know, do our preliminary discussions on the road, and the fire department, and everybody else will take a peek at it.
They will be here on the 4th?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, we'll go on to, oh, we still have a few more minutes before 7:15. We can go on to other business, planning board notes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to talk a little bit about an experience I had on Monday evening down the town at Dennis at their planning board meeting. Pretty different scenario. I can honestly, yeah, if you want, that's fine. Pretty good meeting. It was different sitting in the audience watching than sitting up front and having to make those decisions and stuff. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up to us that I think that was very helpful for not only the audience, but for the planning board members themselves, they have a video system that has a 60-inch screen TV. And their town planner, which is Mr. Fortier, which is very well-respected in the industry, he controls that TV. And basically how it worked was people would come in with a PowerPoint presentation or what have you, the applicant. Mr. Fortier would control that as it walked through, always being able to reference back and it was right there for everybody to look at. So you know like how we would look at a set of plans and what have you, when people in the audience wouldn't have that opportunity? I thought it was very well, good piece of equipment, good piece of information for not only the planning board members, but the members at large, or the citizens in the audience. I know there was a couple of selectmen in the audience at the time, a conservation person in the audience. It was very helpful. And I thought it was one very good. I think it's just a real good tool that maybe somewhere down the road, that some money would fall out of the tree, that we could look into that. I think it would be a good asset to have. It was very helpful for us. I won't get into however they else worked out there, but I thought that was a good thing to bring to you guys. I talked to Jack the very next day just to let him know how it was and everything. And I think it would be well worth us having.
Where was this again, Will?
Town of Dennis.
Dennis?
Yeah, it was a nice presentation they did in all different times. They had seven applications in front of them in one night. And it was nice to see how it was brought forward. And you know how like we have subcommittees that are put together, two people on this board would work on a project with Jack and an applicant, you know, all the ins and outs and stuff like that before it was brought in. And just showing the different things, and the people that were very familiar with it, they're right on target with it. But as Jack would be helping the applicant present it, and stop and be able, him being very familiar with, or Mr. Fortier to be very familiar with a project going on, he was able to step back and go right to the slide, right to that end of it, show it on the big screen TV and say, "This is this," and be able to get up and reference it, and reference this wall, and just show it. And it was clear as day that people would be able to see. I thought it was a great tool.
So that screen is up there permanently?
Yep. But it's a nice.
I'd like to go down to Dennis and say.
I can tell you Mr. Fortier is well-respected in the business, my business. And if you go on Dennis's webpage, and I've sent the web.
It's rocking.
To this webpage, it's the best webpage I've seen. The town, not just planning.
Their town website is very interactive between any of their boards, anything that's going on in their town. I've gotten pretty well involved with a couple of things there. And you could see the different stages of stuff that had come on. The big thing is Lowe's might be coming to town. They've got it going on, especially for information for the public is awesome.
Yep.
Where we always struggle to get as much information out there. It's a nice tool to have.
They have blogs and they tweet, and they do all kinds of social networking to get the word out, you know, it's kind of.
I thought that was a good thing, and I just wanted to bring it to you guys. Kind of look into it. I've got a couple of appointments down there with some of the people in town, so I'm going to try to see if I can get a little bit more information from Mr. Fortier on how that all works and the costs that we're involved with, all that other stuff, because I'm sure it's not cheap, but you know, something to think about. I think it'd be a great asset even for like a selectman's meeting, you know, where they can actually show, you know, certain things that might be going on and be able to project a little bit more information other than just, I know we do PowerPoints and stuff, but really with the thermostat and the way it always bothers me at home, and half of the time you can't really hear them anyway, so it's just one of those things. I thought it was a good thing to bring up to you guys, so.
So it'd be something that could just be set up in one meeting room though, you couldn't take it from one.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you would love to have the opportunity, like we have Fran and Fran, they come down and do our meetings here down in this, down here, but to have it up in the main selectman's room where the majority of the meetings concon us, you know, take place up there, I think it'd be great. I'd love to see like the redevelopment authority and BDC start having their tapes, so that way more information's getting out there. 90% of the time when we bring something forward from BDC, we got it in front of the selectmen to first get it out there as a presentation. We've been working on it for a year and a half, like the Spring Street project per se, which will be coming in front of you guys, just so give you guys kind of a rundown about what we're doing and what we've been working on. We presented to the selectman last time, but it would give more information out there. And I thought the way that they did it really worked well. It was just from somebody who's been involved with us for so long, to be in that side of the table, in the audience, and being able to see that particular intersection right straight up front and seeing different things, it really worked well for me. Just wanted to bring that up to you guys.
Thank you, Will.
Did I eat up enough, Frank?
You did.
Yeah, just call me the general.
All right, it is about 7:08.
Maybe.
Being about 7:18 now, we can go on to old business, which is 7:15 is a public hearing proposed solar bylaw and the public hearing notice. The Town of Carver hold a public hearing on pursuant to GLC 748-5 on November 7th, 2012 at 7:15 PM at the Carver Town Hall, meeting room four. Purpose of this public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed changes to the Carver zoning bylaws. The proposed amendment is to amend Article 2, Section 2230, and further to amend the Town of Carver zoning bylaws by adopting the following new section, Article 3, Section 3580. The intent of this zoning amendment is to add a new bylaw for large-scale solar for photovoltaic facilities. A copy of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is on file at the town clerk's office and may be inspected during normal business hours. Any person interested and wishing to be heard on the proposed changes should appear at the time and place designated. Bruce Mackey, Chair, Carver Planning Board. Published dates, October 26, 2012, and November 2, 2012. Okay, so.
I think Will would be the appropriate person here, not me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, you know, as a WJAD designate to sit on the solar bylaw committee, they made me chair, which is great, but it really didn't matter anyways. All the people that were involved worked very hard on this bylaw. And we've come up with a good bylaw. And I know that Jack had forwarded to you guys to go through it. We then stepped in and we established two subcommittees off of that. One to work on just language for buffering, dimensional buffering, criteria, stuff like that. The other one was to look at actual where it could, might work in the town for property laws and what properties that might be affected by having the opportunity to implement a large solar project in the town. So that was done very well. And in the document that you see in front of you, it's a good document, I think, when it comes to where we were and where we've come to. I'll be right up front with you. We're still having some issues on either an overlay district or a allowed through the town but under a special permit throughout the whole town. So we are having that issue. But other than that, the committee agrees 100% with all the setback requirements, special permits, where it can be allowed and not allowed. The buffering was, is a huge help. We sent out a survey that we got a good response from the survey that we done. And the survey was pretty helpful, especially when it came to the RA problem, which is the residential agricultural RA districts that we have in the town. And that was the problem that we've had even last year when we tried to bring it to town. But it's still an issue. How do you separate RA? I've looked at it myself, different ways, and how can I decipher between R and A, even though it's just one district? And I thought with the buffering that we put in place actually helped me a lot, and I'll say it just me. I know that we have a discussion that's going on between the members on whether or not that actually helps us enough. And three of the members of the subcommittee were gracious enough to hang out in case I mess this all up, and trying to explain what's happening. It's been a tough bylaw to try to draft because we're dealing with the residential agricultural end of it. The survey came back, and in a nutshell, a lot of the survey said that the residents didn't want it in the residential area. Well, we don't have just a residential area, we have RA's. We know as a board, as a planning board, that large solar, ground-mounted solar in a residential area is tough, tough to deal with, especially when we didn't have any criterias to go by and stuff like that. There was great tools in this document that no matter how this goes, those tools, I think, are done very well and will give us the tools to better assist us on the decision-making when it comes to a large solar project coming into town. I think that is great. The problem lies in a nutshell is we have a split on the board, which is three people are against having an overlay district, which would be, if I could just come up here and if I mess it up, I'll ask Eric to help me out. Basically, the southern part of town, we would be coming down South Metal Road.
Tremont Street.
Excuse me, Tremont Street, south, down to Wareham, south would be the overlay district. By special permit in front of this board, okay? And there's great tools in there for setback requirements and stuff like that. Can you see it okay, Fran?
Absolutely.
See, if we had the video, we'd be good. So it's basically down this way to town, south, in a nutshell. And if somebody came in, and there's some properties in here with a potential where people could, you know, use the solar project as an economic development on their property to try to help them, okay? With the tools that are in there that would work. There's three people on the committee that think that by cutting this off, allowing nowhere else in the northern part, central northern part, will be allowed by the overlay district. So it wouldn't be allowed up here at all. And there are some potentials up in here. Granted, myself and Eric Tobolski worked on trying to pick pieces out of the town that where it might work. And then when we got a piece, we looked at the wetlands issues, we looked on the vicinities of housing and all that other stuff, and would it fit and would it work? And it was tough throughout the whole town, but even up in this area, it was really tough. But there is potential up here. The problem lies is we can't come to an agreement, a unanimous agreement, to allow it throughout the whole town, under special permit by the planning board with the regulations in place. And I think it's because we have a feeling on the board that some of us feel that it wouldn't get through town because of the impacts that we had on the previous solar project that was in a residential area that came in front of us. It's hindering the opinions per se. Also, when we got the information back from the, let's see, from the survey, it was very clear that the residents didn't think or want it in the residential area. It was as clear as day. And that I kind of expected because of what we went through, but I was looking for a definitive point on that, and that, in my opinion, was pretty good. That said, in residential, they didn't want it. Well, the problem is we don't decipher between residential and agricultural. So I really, I would really like to see more work done on it, but before you guys make a decision on where we want to go with this, because it will be an article from this board, there are members that were on the committee that are here, and I'd love for them to talk to you and just explain to you where we're at, because I don't want to be, I think we're really close. There's also an opinion that, to bring it forward, under two articles. One article would be option one. Option one would say by special permit with the overlay district in South Carver. Then there would be option two in an article that would say the whole town under special permit by the planning board. And eliminate.
As less as an option one, option two, and more as.
Come on up here, because it's more for the people at home, so.
The intent was less to.
Could you say your name, please?
Eric Tobolski.
Your address.
3 Leland Way.
Thank you.
The intention was less to be an option one and an option two, as much as, you know, everybody seems to agree that we could use some regulations for the solar projects in town. So the body would be part of option one, and then the option two, so to speak, would just be to strike out the overlay district and the entire town as fair game, basically.
And that's the problem that we're having, because the problem is trying to decipher between the RA and R in the agricultural. There's properties in North Carver that I think that I'm having, and this is my opinion, this is the problem that I'm having with it on the, just the one overlay district, is that I can see some properties in North Carver, but just on an overlay district in South Carver, that would, in my opinion, not give, take away the rights for somebody in North Carver, Center North Carver, the right to have that option of a large ground-mounted solar and voltaic system there, and hinder their options on economic development or what have you. If South Carver would have that option, but they'd have to come to the planning board and go through the whole deal. We have good regulations in place to help us with that. So I'm having a problem with that end of it. I've always looked at different ways on trying to split that end. I didn't like the position that I was put in when we dealt with the previous application on the solar project that came in, but I also didn't have, in my opinion, a choice on how to go. And I know people disagree with that and think that we should have did different things, and I'm not going to talk about that. This would give me the opportunity, if this was enacted and in place at that time, I could have said no, and I had something to back me up on it and do it, and because it had a direct impact with the residential aspect. We're really close. We just can't come to a strong consensus of where we go. We have a, it was a three to two vote. Three people that were here tonight, we had more members, but they're not here tonight. Three people were in favor of townwide, no overlay district. Two people were against it. And it's because there's difference of opinions and perceptions and.
Will, can I make a comment on that, please?
Come up, you're a part of the committee, so.
James O'Brien, 4 Ray Mallow Drive. I think in a way, I don't want it to be misconceived that you're saying that three were for and three, two were against.
I'm just giving the opinion of what the vote was.
Right, but the vote that we, was to put forth a two-part thing, so it wasn't that I was necessarily totally in favor of an overlay map.
I know.
Because from the beginning, I sort of have issues with that. I think, I have a hard time saying you can do it on agricultural and you can't, and why is that okay? But I think the fact that we did do the survey, and the fact that the survey results clearly stated that people didn't want this near residential areas, it's that northern part of town that's heavily residential. And I understand that there are certain areas in there that could fit in with that buffering and with the special permit. My point in favor of the two-part proposal lets the people make that choice, because that's where I feel that decision belongs. I feel that as a committee, if we go in saying special permit all over the town, we're doing a disservice to all those people who said that they don't want it near residential. And in the same sense, going in saying it's just an overlay, we're doing a disservice to those people in North Carver that might deserve or want that opportunity. And I think that if we go forth with something that presents the people to make a choice in this, which is ultimately what it needs to be, then we should actually give them a choice. So I'm not a 100% fan of overlay maps at all, I'm not saying that in any way. I'm also, I'm more towards the allowing landowners their rights, but in a sense, I think that the people that are speaking up in the surveys and that are going to come to the meeting should be the ones to make that ultimate decision. Because I don't think that, I think to just allow it as a special permit all over town does a disservice to the fact that we did that survey and the responses that those people put forth in filling out that survey. They clearly, they made it very clear that they did not want it near residential areas. And being in a neighborhood where that's been proposed, I 100% sympathetic with that and understand why. But I just feel that I have a hard time being the one to say that, no, this is the only way that we're going to put it forth, and you have to pick yes or no. I think we lose that way. I think because we could walk away from there with nothing and be in the same boat we were in before. Whereas if there's an option of choice, as Eric had said, if everybody agrees that a special permit in South Carver is okay, at least you're putting something out there. And I'm not saying that I 100% agree with that, but what I am saying is, at least we're getting something in there like the teeth that you're saying you need. And then if the consensus is that if you're going to allow it in South Carver, then you should allow it everywhere, then allow them that vote on that. Allow them that choice to make, as opposed to forcing a choice down their throat as a yes or a no, but giving them an option. I do understand that there are technical difficulties that may arise from that, but it just seemed to me to be the fairest way to actually let the people decide what their fate is, as opposed to making it for them. And I just wanted it to be clear, that's why I stood on that. It wasn't necessarily a three to two vote that way.
And you voted tonight?
And we voted tonight.
And the vote was?
And the vote was to, Eric's motion was to put forth the two options, so to put forth with the overlay, but then also to put forth with getting rid of the overlay so that it was townwide. And that would give the people a choice. I'm not firm in saying that we should just have an overlay. I'm not firm in saying that it should be a special permit anywhere. Because I don't, I think that the survey results led to other thoughts and maybe things that lead, you know, who knows who's going to show up at the meeting to make that vote. But I really think that that decision should be optional.
And it was a, was it a three to two vote?
It was a three to two, that three were not in favor of the overlay in any way.
And just bringing a special permit everywhere.
Right. Three were opposed to the motion to bring forth two.
And that's the dilemma that we're having. I mean, there's pros and cons on both sides, and we've had this discussion before, and you can't not respect the opinions of different people. It hasn't been easy from the start, we knew that. We knew it wasn't going to be an easy bylaw to draft and to bring to town. And I can respect what Jim's saying, you know, bring two different options to town. My only concern is what happened last year, when we brought two different issues to town.
I see the difference is, though, is we're really bringing one issue with two choices, that they're either going to pick it with the special permit in South Carver, or they're going to allow it anywhere in Carver. But either way, I think we're going to walk away with an agreement with one or the other. And what that really does is give you the teeth that you're looking for, because if we go with one choice and we go with special permit throughout the town, and everybody says no, and it doesn't pass, then you have nothing. You're left with nothing at all.
The fact of the matter is, there doesn't seem to be any objection to allowing special permits in the south part of town. The only objection seems to be.
The overlay map itself.
The south part of town. So it seems like that might be the best way to go, that, okay, we have full agreement at the south part of town with special permits, with the regulations that we have proposed. Everybody's okay with that. It's just the north part of town, so it seems like that's the best way to, regardless of how the second part gets voted, to get at least some regulations in place.
The only problem that I have with that, and I told them that I would speak about it, is that if we, if I have a large piece of property in North Carver, and that takes away my option on the table of anything to try to help me, whether it would be for economic development or what have you, and by saying no in North Carver, or it's pretty much, you know, more than North Carver anyways, it really tells you from the Center Carver up that if I had a property that had a large amount of property where this would work, I don't even have the option out of the gate to do it. And I'm not saying people would do that, I'm just saying, and we looked at this pretty good, that it's a very small amount of area that would be addressed, but to say no, I just have a problem with that. I don't have to say that that's, it's either that or nothing. I'm only one person. I'm only one person, I'm just telling you, and I said this at our meeting, I'm only one person trying to do the best that we can with this. We are having a problem with that end of it. They have some value on bringing two options to the town meeting. The problem that I see with that is that, say that option one goes and gets passed, and then the people that are there for the meeting overwhelm the vote of option two, so those people that only have a small choice voice a row.
But that's what the town wants, how are we to-
I understand, so then you allow the town to tell me that I can't build on my property, and that's my hardest thing, I can't get over that hump.
Yeah, on that one, we already, like I said earlier, we already have limited areas open to commercial and industrial development, plenty of people that can't do that.
And we agree on that.
And Will and I, when we had sat down with the map to take a look at where it may be possible, you know, the south part of town looked great for it, and the three areas in the north part of town that were, looked like they could be reasonable with some setbacks, given the fact that it's drier land than we have somewhere else. So, even if we follow Tremont Street and hook around to grab this piece of property here, which is pretty much there anyways, there really isn't that much that you're saying no to, I mean, compared to everything else that you're saying, "Yeah, go ahead and try it." It's going to make quite a lot of disruption in everyone's life, I mean, you guys all know what it was like with that, the hearings last year, for something that's ultimately not going to happen.
Eric, could you please highlight Tremont Street so I can see it again?
Yep, Tremont Street is more or less right here.
Right in there, that's 58, right?
Uh, it's 50 from this point down.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at that right.
I just want a point of clarification, because it was confusing to me, too. What the subcommittee voted on was four and three against to have two articles. They didn't vote on anything else. They didn't vote on having one article or another article or some hybrid, they didn't vote on anything. That was hard enough, trust me. And like I said, we're close. I guess it's a difference of opinions or trying to figure out what would be the best route to go, in a nutshell, I guess. And we do know that we need the regulations. There's no doubt in my mind we need the regulations.
And they're good, and it was a lot of work. And Bridgewater State did a very, very good job with their survey in pulling that together. I wasn't sure how they were going to really pull that across, and they did a nice job with it.
It was very helpful.
It was, and that's really what, that's really what turned me, actually, because I wasn't a huge fan of the survey in the beginning, but the results of the survey, because I haven't been an overlay map fan, I'm not a huge fan of that. But when you look at the results of the survey and what people are saying, they don't want it near residential. And it's, I understand that there are spots to do that up there, and I think that there are some good regulations in the bylaw to deal with that. My contention has been that I just think the people should choose that. I think that the option should be theirs to make that choice. Because if we put that there, and enough people have said, "We don't want it in this area," and it walks, we walk away from the town meeting without anything, where are you as a board? I mean, you don't have anything now.
We're in the same position that we're in.
Right, which is horrible for everybody.
If we come in with just a special permit in the whole town, that's exactly what I'm afraid is going to happen, you know, based on the survey results and everything else that's going on. It just doesn't seem like there's enough support in the town for a special permit.
Now, for clarification on the survey results, the survey didn't give out any information when it came to the regulations that we've come up with, the setback requirements, the buffering requirements or anything like that. Not saying that it would have been a difference, I don't think it would have been, because of what I call the black eye that's transpired before, is the solar, large solar project on Purchase Street. That's out there, people seen it, it's very politicized, very well advertised in the town and all that other stuff. People know that that's a problem. We wouldn't be sitting here talking about it if that was somewhere else or what have you, but that's what makes us have to sit down and do something like this. But I'm not saying that if we got the word out of the exact buffering and the setback requirements that are installed, and those are the tools that I keep referring to, and in that package you'll see there's references that if it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, that planning board can say no. That if there's a direct, how's the phrase, the direct impact to the quality and life of the residents or something like that, I forget what it was, I know we talked about-
We took some of the gray out, though.
Yeah.
It was much more specific.
So, that would give a criteria for the planning board to say no. So, that, as Jim was saying, we definitely got some good tools put in place.
You know, a big thing to add to what Will said about, you know, we didn't have setbacks and buffering and all those kind of things in there, they weren't in the bylaw, or I'm sorry, they weren't in the survey, but what we're proposing matches all of those things. And the results of the survey, it's not saying that it's, you know, we were just concerned about one or the other.
Right.
They were pretty much equally concerned about the buffering, the setbacks, the lines of sight, and the zoning. It seems like it's just the one thing that's going to be a big hang-up for a lot of people if we say that we don't care about zoning and special permit everywhere, even though we understand that it's not going to work everywhere. How many people at town meeting are going to understand that without having gone through a year's worth of everything that we have working on this?
That's where we're at.
Yeah, we have to make this decision tonight.
Well, yes and no. It's, I have a placeholder on the Warren Arnold. You can, I guess you have a lot of options, you can, I'm not going to put words in anyone's mouth here, I'm trying to- Well, you can say, you can say no and make us work more, that's one option. That's one. Number two, you guys can say yarr and go back and keep working, so then it stays and keeps moving forward. And we can keep working and try to come up with some type of way that this will, to present to town meeting.
As a single article instead of A and B.
Whatever we support.
Whatever we support, and then we're going to be looking for the planning board to support and back it.
If I may ask a question, do we have a deadline for when we have to have something for printing?
Yes, it's going to have to be tonight. That, whatever you're going to have printed has to be tonight, because the selectmen are going to solidify the agenda, I mean, the warrant on Tuesday. So, that's when they'll solidify it and goes to print. You have another meeting on the 20th and the 4th, actually, before town meeting, you could theoretically continue the hearing and play around and then have amendments at town meeting. That's always possible.
I think that would probably be messier than even bringing forth two articles.
No, we agree. I can't argue with that, and we've seen that happen before. But- Now, in full disclosure, I did talk on the direction from the Solar Bylaw Committee, talked to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen on an article to extend the moratorium, because we had felt that we were getting close, but we didn't know if at the time that I had talked to him about a month ago, whether or not we'd be ready enough for this fall town meeting for this. He didn't have a problem with us bringing that, and that is one of our plans, and I think-
That's a Board of Selectmen on it.
I think Eric was the one who thought that that was a great idea, and the committee was all for that.
So, that way, nobody gets hurt. I mean, there's nothing I can, well, I mean, there's no project that can come up-
Yes, it can.
They can come and get approval from planning board, but they can't ask the town for tax breaks, so conceivably-
Oh, I see.
-you could be in the same position with Purchase Street coming back again, but just not getting the tax breaks.
Right. So-
It certainly impedes it strongly. Obviously, there's still one alive. I've told it's online support, who knows?
Not that I want to delay the process, because I think that-
I've got a black mark on it.
I think that the, we're really talking about A and B, and I guess it's up to this board here to decide whether or not bring in two articles to town meeting for, to be presented, or one article or nothing right now, is really the bottom line, one, two or three. A, B, or C, however you want to look at it.
To bring those A, B, or C to town meeting and then to discuss-
No, it's either, it's either A, you don't bring anything to town meeting at this time, because of the indecision of where the committee sits. Well, the planning board can say, "Listen, I think that you guys are at a point now that there's good regulations in place, you guys have come to a good consensus, go back, give me two articles that are going to work, and we'll present the two articles. One will have the overlay district, which will only be self of Carver."
Somebody really wants to-
You have no idea. One would be only of self of Carver, or that could change a little bit, or whatever. And the other one could be option two, which would allow it townwide under special permit, no overlay. So, I think those would be the three options for this board to decide on, I would say, tonight. We've got to make some kind of decision. We were struggling with this earlier.
We have to have something tonight, yes.
Either way, I know that the regulations that we put in place aren't going to change, it's just how we're going to deal with either an overlay or townwide. Well, and-
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I throw this change in there?
Sure, Kevin's part of the-
Yep. I'm going to put a couple pennies in.
Don't give us option D.
No, I'm not going to give you an option D. Kevin Tracy, 139 Point Street, just for the record.
Thank you.
Also on the Solar Bylaw Committee, as you know. From my perspective, and I was one that voted against Eric's motion previously, I know, having been through this more than once on the town meeting, having more than one option tends to muddy the water. It gets really, it gets really hard for people to keep track of that, and that's, and that was, let me finish. And that was, that was the reason, that was one of my main reasons for voting against having two options, because it cards everything. And from my perspective, I don't have any problem with any of the language that was in this, in this bylaw, except for the reference to the overlay district. Like Will said, what it did, from my perspective, was to deny an economic opportunity to anybody north of Tremont Street, which, if you think about it, is pretty far south in the town. You know, I live in North Carver, and I know personally of properties that would have potential development opportunities if they were given, if they were given the chance. Something that would not be overly burdensome to property owners that are adjacent to them, and, you know, it would provide an economic opportunity for people up north, you know, because, you know, the agricultural industry is, it's a tough business to be in. I'm in agriculture myself. It's a tough business to be in. And that's, for me, economic opportunity is what, part of what it was about for me. So, and that's just from my perspective.
May I ask you a question? It keeps being mentioned that, you know, bringing two options forward confuses things. Out of what has happened in the past is, what I'm thinking of, when I hear two options, I'm thinking, "We bring two full documents up there."
Yeah.
Is, that's what you're thinking of?
Yeah.
And to be clear, what I was proposing was not to bring two big full documents up there, but just one document. We agree with 99% of it, it's just the one thing up there.
The one document, from my perspective, the one document had a flaw in it, that I couldn't, that I couldn't reconcile in my mind. Okay? And that's, and that's the point that I'm making on that.
The point I'm trying to make, though, is when you're saying bring two options, that sounds to me like it's two big documents rather than one big document that-
I get it.
-everyone's on board with 99%, and then it's just this one law.
I get it, I understand. But as a, as a Solar Bylaw Committee, it's our responsibility to decide what it is that we want to bring forward. And if, and if, and if in my opinion, the document has a flaw in it, I have to vote no.
I understand that.
Okay? That's just from my perspective.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay? So, Mr. Chair, that's pretty much in a nutshell where we're at. I know that you guys have had the opportunity to review the document in place.
Hey, I, you know, I'm to, I'm not offering anything here, other than-
Please do.
I have to tell you that these guys, they've worked pretty darn hard on this.
They've done a standing job.
Unfortunately, they can't come to a decision.
Yes.
I would like, I'm always the optimist, thinking that maybe you could. But it's been very, very civil. Maybe a few bumps in the road early on, I don't know.
Extremely civil.
Very, I'm very impressed with that.
Why don't you look at me?
It wasn't really you, it's everybody, I think, everybody on the committee.
But I just wanted the board to know that, maybe the public, that extremely civil, if this is the way Carver's government's going to be, God bless you guys, this is not easy. I'm just going to say.
So, I think that the discussion for us now should be, what do you think you would like to bring? You know what, we've given the options, you see where our dilemmas are, and they're right in both directions, so there is no wrong here. So, I think that realistically, the options are, is you bring one article or you bring a combination article to town.
Or no article.
Or no article. And no article just means we have to go back to work and try to iron that out. I don't know, and I can say this, I think fairly confident, maybe 65%, if we can ever come to a unanimous agreement on those two issues. I don't know how we can do that, and I don't know whether or not we can, and I hate to do like, you know, say self at Tremont, and then, while this hunk of property might have it, and this hunk of property, and that hunk of property throughout the town spotted, I thought of that, and I think that's originally where we had started from, and because there was some potential throughout the whole town. I hate to say no and don't bring anything to the town. I don't know what, and I'll look at you guys, you think we can come to an agreement, you know, I'm more than willing to keep working, everybody is, for 100% fall, keep working on this and keep coming, trying to nail down a good, good end of it. We've been dealing with the RA district issue from day one.
Unfortunately, it seems like one year, that's been the one disagreement.
And that's been the hardest way to do it.
That's kind of what led to my thought, you know, just give the town the right to choose that, as opposed to just bringing them one thought that we don't agree on.
And I, and just for, for my opinion, well, I'm not even going to say it, so forget it. You have another citizen in town would like to talk, Mr. Chair. There's a public here.
Robert Belvin, 26 Gate Street. I have a couple of different things. I'll try to go backwards, if I remember correctly. Actually, go from front. First thing is, who is the special permit granting authority? Is it, because this is a zoning article, it should be the zoning board. It shouldn't be the planning board, if it's a zoning article, number one. Number two, the, the idea of this overlay district, all right, I think is a good idea of bringing that up, okay, as a starting point, okay? A bylaw is a fluid document that can be changed at any time, all right? But we need a starting point. We have a moratorium now with the selectmen that the selectmen won't negotiate. But yet, the selectmen just negotiated with somebody out of our town to get credits. That can happen here, too. Another town can say, "Hey, yeah, we're going to put solar power here in Carver, but those credits are going to go to another town." That can happen, because we have no document. We need something.
It's a good point, Paul.
We need something, all right? And a starting point, I think the overlay district, I have to say, is a good idea, it's a starting point. Let's stop it, let's get it done. We have until the end of December, 31st. December 6th is our town meeting, okay? We need something now. We can't wait till next town meeting. We need it now. It would have been great if we had it, years passed. But that's where I'm staying, is now, to start something, get somewhere, and if another developer in the North Carver area says, "Hey, I want to do solar up here, can you expand this area?" And then go back and start this process. A year is nothing, really, with a solar project, to get it going. A year is nothing, really, with a solar project, to get it going, okay? They go through years and years and years, going through zoning and planning and everything. There is options out there, okay? My final thing here is that we have our bylaws clearly state, anything that's not in this bylaw is acceptable. That's what it says, the first couple of paragraphs.
That's correct. Except, not a lot, not acceptable.
Yeah, not acceptable, all right? So we have to look at this, we need something, all right? So, please, don't push it off, we need it today. You need to vote on it today. Whatever it's gonna be, if it's the overlay district with it, please, something, okay? Personally, I don't think that it should be in residential areas, unless it's for residential purposes only. Okay? If you're gonna put it on your house, I have no problem for it, all right? If you're using it just for your house. But if you're using it for something else, that's totally different, all right? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Just a clarification for Bob, or on Bob's comment. There's three entities that can be special permit granting authorities, planning boards, zoning boards, appeals, and board of selectmen. And 90% of the special permits are, maybe more than that, are planning boards, so it's not... This is not out of whack.
Thank you.
And the last thing is just, the moratorium is not on whether the selectmen can purchase power, it's on whether they can negotiate tax relief on panels that may be situated in town, which is a big deal, I thought, I still think. The jury's still out on parade, though, but no one else would ever touch it without tax break. You can't do any energy projects, albeit wind, solar, nuclear, without tax breaks. But that's what the moratorium's on. It's not a zoning moratorium, it's not a purchase of power moratorium.
If I may, are you...
Yeah, please.
If I may. Bridgewater always does an excellent job on doing surveys, all that I've seen. And the committee did do an excellent job. However, as a planning board member, I'm uncomfortable. I think it needs to go back to the drawing board. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw it this time.
You can't... You're gonna close the public hearing before you do that, right?
If I may, what is it that you're uncomfortable with? Is it just the indecision on where, or is it other parts of the document?
No, it's basically this, basically going to the town with either one, with two options, or two different ones. That can be a disaster, from what I have seen previously with different bylaws in town. It can get very confusing, so I'm basically not... I'm not comfortable with it, to vote on it. I think it needs to go back to the drawing board, where it needs to be a majority vote.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you... Oh, okay, sorry. Do we... Probably should close the public hearing, and then we'll...
You don't have to. I suggest you keep it open, because I don't know where you're going.
Okay.
You don't wanna close it in case you don't vote anymore.
There's a motion on the table right now, Mr. Chair, so we need a second for discussion, or the motion dies, or...
You have to close the public hearing before you can make any motions.
No, it's not true. It's not true.
So, what was your question again?
My motion is, this time, to withdraw it and have them go back to the drawing board until they can come up with a solid plan and a majority vote.
Okay, let me second that, and then let's go on to further discussion.
So, I guess my discussion is this. So say that you send us back to keep going, okay? And the committee comes back to you in a month, or two months, or whatever it is, and says, we can't get there, but we've come up with a better way to present it at town meeting. Then we're out till spring.
Yes.
Or if you... And I don't know if we cannot get there between now and December. We got one, two, three, at least three meetings that we could have, where we could come up with a document, I think, where the committee could be there unanimously. I think we could get there. I'm confident that we could get there.
To present it to the...
And we would have to amend it on town meeting floor, right?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, my thing is, is that if we go with the motion that's on the table now, and you send us back, and we're out until spring.
We have nothing on the agenda, whereas if we...
We lose that opportunity, and we're really close.
Whereas if we can carry this and not draw it out?
If we go... And I don't wanna tell you what to do, it's your motion, and I'm just thinking that we're really close. Whether or not we can bring a consensus article to the floor that we could amend, where we could get you guys, this planning board, to support, that would be 100% consensus from the committee. I mean, I'm pretty confident that we could probably get there.
Why don't we do this, Will? I make the motion to withdraw it and see where you are at.
If we withdraw it, though, we don't publish anything for the town meeting, correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
Can I ask a question?
It'll be through the chair.
Good.
My question is, as a committee member...
Name and address.
James O'Brien, 48 Main Drive, sorry. How do you see that moving forward, when the contention is overlay or whole town? Because what I would see is either an expansion of the overlay, or just accepting whole town. And it sort of comes to picking apart the town again like that, like you were doing.
I was going back to, in my thought process, was going back to some of the large parcels north of Tremont Street, where we could kind of do somewhat of an overlay...
Seem like a little more or less a little bit?
Kinda like that, but to look at a couple more, and that would be the overlay that we present. It wouldn't be an overlay or a complete townwide. It would be some places that would have the potential in North Kava... I mean, north of Tremont Street, I keep saying North Kava, I apologize for that. That would have the potential or the opportunity, I would say, to be able to fit a criteria. Maybe, you know, they would have problems with buffering or what have you, but they would have that option. Where we would come in, we would present at town meeting, a overlay plan that had certain parts throughout the town, instead of a complonk. So that would allow us to have a little bit of a starting point with some regulations, I guess.
I can't make that decision tonight, Will.
So you're saying if we approve this tonight, that you will work through this and try to get a consensus of the committee? And if there is a consensus, you'll make... You bring this article forward with amendments to the town meeting?
Basically, just amending the table at that point.
Right, that's pretty much what we're doing, is amending the table to include on our map. We would have a map that would be part of this, that would say that these are the areas that we say that could, that are part of the overlay.
And if you couldn't come to a consensus, then we could...
Withdraw it at town.
Withdraw the article at town meeting. So this'll give you an extension of time to work on this.
If it's withdrawn now, we don't have an agenda in December.
If we withdraw now, then we still go back to work, and we have to wait till spring. And either way, that's... Being where we're at today, that's my thought process.
Chair, what's your...
I'm just gonna, you know... I know what you're saying. I know what everyone's saying. I get very defensive with the board about what happened last in February at town meeting, and it was ugly. It was very ugly. The town, the board withdrew an article in town meeting, actually went against legal advice, and it became a mess. And that's what I would be worried about.
And that's what I'm worried about.
Now, I'm hoping, because what I just said five minutes ago, I meant that everybody's getting along fantastically. But in my opinion, if Will... I mean, if Eric and James aren't in favor of a bylaw, it's not gonna pass town meeting. If Will and the planning board aren't in favor of a bylaw, it's not gonna pass town meeting. And that's where you're stuck.
And I think we're real close. That's... I can... I'm kinda giving faith that we can come to that opinion.
And if you don't...
Then you're gonna have a bylaw on the...
And I really don't... I really don't wanna go there.
I don't know what it is.
If I may, I mean, last time it was a petition article, so it seems like it would be a little bit different if it's...
You know, I've been at quite a few of them, Eric, and I've seen it, not with just this, with other things. And I personally don't wanna go there as a planning board member. My motion is to withdraw it at this time.
I was trying to say, though, is if the planning board is the one sponsoring it, and they withdraw it, would there even be an opportunity for the town to try and overrule?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just on the record, just to state, I haven't been involved in a lot of those issues in the past, where multiple situations have been presented, and that confusion is there. From my perspective, I have a very hard time seeing how this would be challenging, where you're basically saying, everything is all set, and you either have to agree to have an overlay or not have an overlay. And that's really it. That's what it comes down to. You accept the overlay, or you allow it special permit everywhere. I don't see a confusing aspect there. I don't see it as it's gonna cause a lot of confusion in conversation. Either you're gonna support it as an overlay map, or you're gonna support it to allow it anywhere in the district. Period. I just don't see how that could become...
And that's okay, Mr. O'Brien. That's okay.
Right, exactly.
I have been there, and I have witnessed it, and I have my opinion, and...
I think I'd like to see you guys all in some sort of an agreement, so when you bring this to town meeting, you can say that, you know, everybody was in agreement with this. And I think that would be an enormous help to passing this thing
And I agree with you.
at town meeting. So, yeah, I would like to... I would like to see this worked on more, until you did come to an agreement. I mean, I... This bylaw's great, I read it, it's great, except for that one stumbling point. You could see all the buffering and all the setbacks, and there was a lot of work put into this. And it's good, except for that one, you know, the one area that you guys are working on now.
Robert Bellvin, 26 Gate Street, again. So if I get this clear, if there wasn't an overlay, you'd vote for it?
No, I think it's just a consensus of agreement amongst all the members, you know.
So if they come back here with an agreement that they'll do a special permit for everywhere, you guys would have no problem with that?
Whatever they come back with, there's an agreement.
That's the only way that things will get to a town meeting.
See, I can't answer that question tonight. All I can answer is, I'm not happy what's being presented tonight to me, and what the vote was. And I think they need to go back to the drawing board. So as a planning board member, I feel that I need to make a motion to withdraw it.
There may... What happens if this committee can't come into agreement? So the town all loses out totally?
But you don't know that, Bob. You don't know that they can't... They haven't up until tonight. You can't say never, because they could go back and work on it and come up with an agreement. And that's what I hope happens.
Okay. Mr. Scolia, how long have you guys been working on this solar bylaw? How many months?
About a year at this point.
And they have, and I've been to some of their meetings, all right? But you have to look at this and say, all right, we need something, because we don't have anything now.
I understand that.
And at least putting forth what's been presented as is, all right? And then allow the town people to decide, whether it comes back as a motion to amend it, let the people decide that. At least have the special permit, all right? Vote for that one. Vote for one of the two now. Say, hey, okay, we'll do it this way or that way, that's what you're here for. And then turn around and say, hey, if he's not happy with half of it, then they can amend it at town meeting. If he's not happy with it, then they can amend it at town meeting. Just give town meeting the opportunity to vote on it. That's all I'm asking. Give the town the opportunity to vote. Because you're not gonna make everyone happy, and I know that, okay? No matter what, you're not gonna make anyone happy. But at least if we have something there, something is better than nothing, because nothing's gonna get us in trouble.
Thank you.
Well, I think it was up to the committee to look at this and to come up to some sort of agreement on what they wanted to do. And I think... I think it's worth the while, it's come a long ways. Because I attended, I think, what, the first or second meeting? And, you know, now we're talking overlay districts, you've come a long, long ways. And if a few things could be worked out...
Let me suggest this, Mr. Chair, through you, to Rose Marie. If you give us the opportunity to come out with, and I'm just gonna use a complonk, say, an overlay district. So everything in the document is stated the way it is. Give us the option to bring an overlay district to town meeting, this town meeting. What it looks like and everything, we'll bring that. It won't just be south of Tremont Street. It will be directed by you to go back and look at, how are we doing overlay district to encompass the town in a whole? Which basically would be the parcels of property where we might have some potential of a... The ability for a large ground-mounted solar system installed. And that will be the map that will be the overlay district. If you give us that opportunity to bring that, I think we can do that.
Then you take it back to your committee.
And that would give us...
And let them vote on it, and then come back here to the planning board.
That would give us the opportunity to bring at least that to the town. That being said, it will give us a starting point, and like everybody said, we've got real good language. And basically, as I'm seeing it, I'm looking at it as a point of... The criteria that the subcommittee has put together will dictate what pieces of properties that it might work in.
Then you bring it back to your committee, and they can vote on it. And then you can come back here.
Will you allow us to bring it to this fall, or not? Because your motion is...
Do you have time to do it, to bring it to this fall?
We've got three meetings. We could probably...
If we withdraw it now, we don't have any choice if it's brought forward and...
As it is right now...
The market needs more money, so I'm all in.
As it is, as it is right now, I will not vote.
Every night, every night.
I'm going forward.
We could probably make that.
The job is to get the job done. That's right. I agree.
Chair? I'm just trying to give an option.
I really don't know where you're going, any of you on this one at all.
Okay.
Why do you welcome to the pie? That's why I asked these guys to stay.
Knowing that there's a motion and a second to withdraw the whole thing, no bylaw, okay? Just hear me out, I'm trying to think this out here on my feet. I guess I'm gonna look at Eric and James. That if it comes down to where the planning board allows us to go forward now, but wants to withdraw it later, are you gonna battle them on the floor?
The only reason I battled last time was it was a petition article, not one.
And I think that's maybe a compromise, that they would feel comfortable? I don't know, I haven't talked to these guys about it.
I don't even...
I honestly haven't.
I don't even want to go there, compromise. Really. Really, I'm gonna stick with my motion, and to withdraw it, and move on.
I... See, I was maybe reading into your motion that you just didn't wanna be embarrassed to get on the planning, on the town meeting floor.
To withdraw it?
Right.
If the...
If necessary.
If necessary.
I think my opinion is this, is that I... I think that if you allow this to be on the watering, the planning board, to bring a solar bylaw on the watering, with a map that dictates the overlay district, that the subcommittee can present something like that to you for your full and 100% endorsement on town meeting floor. I think we can get there. I know we can get there. And it's just, in the way that we're... And it's just, and the way that we'll get there, and I'll be very specific with it, is that we will take a look at the rest of the town and the position, places where I think the potential could be. And I know me and Eric looked at, me and Eric looked at that quite a bit. That, to include that in the map instead of all of townwide, I think we can get that, to bring that to town meeting.
Honestly, that seems to be the one sticking point.
It is.
How much of the town, really?
And how much of the town that could be...
I understand. I'm sorry.
So that, that's my opinion and that's what I'm asking the board in a whole. I understand where you are sitting, Rosemarie, because prior to this meeting convening, I was right there with you. I'm just saying that we have willing participants to try to do that. Is it my opinion that we will have a perfect document coming into town meeting? No. Will we have a document that has good rules and regulations? Absolutely. Will we have a document that has an overlay map that could look 100% the whole town or parts of the town that there's a potential for economic growth, ground-mounted solar? That's the overlay district. And the way that we'll, we can decipher that is simple. The requirements of, by using the documents and the restrictions that we put in place and the setbacks will dictate the parcels of property that could have a potential. Because basically, if it did townwide, that's what would dictate whether or not they could even meet the requirements to bring to a planning board anyways. But dictate that in a, in a overlay map that would bring not a whole, whether it's a compromise or not, a whole townwide bylaw, but it would be an overlay that we would do the work for you and for town meeting, prior to town meeting, we'd be able to have that map that would dictate the overlay. So basically, what I would be asking you is to allow the solar bylaw to go forward as written with a overlay district that was defined by the map provided. And that would give us the opportunity in the next month to define that map and bring it to you.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Rosemarie.
And if you don't come to an agreement?
Then we can...
Then we're going to have a mess on town meeting.
Well, we could withdraw at the town meeting.
We can.
Let me hear what Jack has to say.
I, you know, I think there's a bigger, I really do think this is a bigger issue. And I, again, the cooperation that has happened here between two different sides that were pretty separate is very beneficial for this town.
Yes, it is.
And I'm going to ask you, I know Mrs. Hanlon, I probably can't convince you, but maybe if Bruce could see fit to not withdraw it and give Will a chance and hopefully at least the subcommittee members of the solar bylaw committee, if they can't come to an agreement, will honor or withdraw. I'm trying to find a way. If you can't find...
I have four of them...
So I'm just trying to...
Members sitting here saying that we can make it happen.
I want to withdraw now because it can be a disaster.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
The way that I'm looking at this is that if we let this go, let these guys work it out, and then by the time it comes to town meeting, if we aren't happy with it, everybody knows, and we've said it on TV, it's not going to be a secret thing, that we won't, we'll just pull the article, we won't bring it, bring it up before town meeting. I don't see anything wrong with that. We're not doing anything secretive and I, and it might, everybody wants to get this done for this next meeting. And it might provide a little incentive for these people to work and to come up with some sort of compromise agreement. I'm willing to do that.
Mr. Chair, if I may? I know we're in the middle of a motion. Mr. Nowin is part of the subcommittee and I think it's beneficial that I explain to him what I'm asking you guys to allow us to do to him because he just walked in the room. Jim, we're trying to allow, have the planning board allow us to bring an article to town meeting floor. The article would, would be to bring a solar bylaw article to town meeting that would encompass all the regulations that we have with an overlay district that would be defined by the map. The map would consist of not just Tremont itself, would be other parts of parcels throughout the town that by this regulation setbacks and everything that we have in here...
Would be suitable.
Would be a potential that might be able to happen for that growth and it would be defined on setbacks.
It seems good.
To come up with that, to bring that into it. And I'm asking the planning board to allow us that to happen. There's a motion on the table right now, Jim, not to bring this forward at this town meeting. We don't want discussion. So I just wanted you to be aware because you're part of the committee. So now I have five members that said that they're willing to get there.
So just, okay, so...
These were the five members that voted earlier, just FYI.
Chuck Meredith's the other member. He wasn't here tonight.
I mean, we're literally that close. And I think that the document, and I hate to keep going back to it, the regulations that we put in place here will dictate the parcels of property that might have the opportunity to do it. And we pretty much tried to keep as much of our personalities out of this, especially when it's come to the crunch and trying to come up with the documents. And there's been a ton of hard work and it's a good document. It's just a, it's the over... Earlier tonight, I was looking at overlay is just restricting so many people's properties. But if I think about the dimensions that are in place, and if we do an overlay that specifies and dictates because of the requirements that they give us the potential, we can come up with that now. And that's what I'm asking you, to give us that opportunity to do. Worst comes to worst, say that we don't come up with that and it still goes to town meeting floor. Say that we had a dividing vote as a subcommittee. And the document that we provide to you, you guys, the planning board decides, we will not endorse. It still goes to town meeting floor. But it's not endorsed by us and it's not endorsed by you. So I guess in a nutshell, I think we're there. I think we can get it done. I've got five members that have worked on this thing hard enough that are nodding their heads that the idea that I have in place to try to decipher that overlay map will work. And we can bring that to you. And I think we can do it. I know we can.
Okay, we have a motion to not allow the article to go to town meeting. And there was a second. Those in favor? Two.
I'm not in favor, so it would be no.
Okay. Well, this is a motion...
Yes would be that you are in favor of withdrawing the article. A no is that you're not in favor.
Then it's, then it's no.
Those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I appreciate your concern, Rosemarie. And I thank you for the opportunity to at least keep working on it. And I know, and I know that we have a tough job. So I do appreciate that.
I'm going to make a suggestion. You continue the hearing till December 20th.
Well, are we going to...
I mean, December 20th.
Are we going to...
2002.
See this before it goes to town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Before it's presented to the planning board?
What's going to happen is that we, there's a subcommittee meeting again on the 14th, bring something back to you on the 20th.
Which one will be on the warrant, though? The one that's right here?
Yes.
We'll work on the map. That's the best I can do.
That's one of the things that I don't, that's one thing that I don't like.
But so basically this and cross out this part in the map to be provided there.
You'll do that tomorrow for me.
So, so can I make a motion then? Because she made the motion not to bring it in, failed. We need a motion to bring a article to town meeting.
You already did that. You made a motion to do a placeholder with the subcommittee a meeting ago.
I was going to, I'd like to, I would have loved to have made the motion to include the map as defined.
It's in the bylaw and I have that map...
Got it.
The other map and the bylaw on file with the clerk.
Perfect.
You can amend that. And now it will have to be amended on the floor.
That's okay. That's fine.
Even if we all come to an agreement. But that's, my opinion, that'll be very easy if everybody's nodding their heads.
If everybody's in agreement, right? Yeah.
And we've been there. So I'm going to suggest you're going to have November 20th, you're going to have December 4th, and you could have December 6th right before this meeting to go in front of the planning board to hash this out. We can keep continuing up to that if necessary. So I'm going to suggest November 20th at 7:15.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the solar bylaw to the 20th of November at what time?
7:15.
7:15.
A second? A second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against?
You guys, thank you very much for your help.
I'm against. You're against the public hearings? Can we skip?
Well, everything.
I'm against everything.
It's okay. Thank you, guys. We'll keep working on it. See what you guys can accomplish. We'll see you next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Told you it wasn't going to be easy.
I'm impressed, very impressed.
Okay.
Never know what's going to happen at the meetings. That's for sure.
So you underplanners notes, Mr. Chair?
Planners notes.
Oh, boy. It's supposed to be special town meetings, December 6th. We're overdone at that. Duncan Donuts has pulled their building permit. They proceeded today. 92 North Main is still alive and kicking. That's the parcel across from Duncan, I mean, from Cumbes in North Carver. The potential of another purchase and sale there. There's also a potential for a purchase and sale on the Vinnie Nacara parcel with the Carver Realty and some, some plans in the works that may be very beneficial to the town. It's very early in the process. I will tell you, on the 20th, you're going to have three applications in front of you. One is for Deekus for their sewage treatment plant. They've already gone in front of Conscom.
They, they applied too, but because we, due to a conflict, we lost that quorum. So we're going to hear it.
So you're next. And two other businesses, signs coming in. One's a new business. It's called the RBI Academy. They, it's a baseball school and they're, they're moving into Waterstones. I met the guy today. Well, it's for kids.
That's fine. I'm a big kid.
Do they use water is what you want to ask. And Dandy Donuts is going to come in for a new sign. That's all. So that's all, yeah.
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes of October 16th, 2012.
We're going to ask them to be tabled.
Yeah, we have no minutes here.
No, no minutes.
No minutes.
We're missing a motion that we got to dig out.
Okay. Correspondence.
I think the only thing I have in correspondence is the quarterly report we get from Makepeace on their expanded environmental notification form. I will tell you, and I think I know I brought this up at the last planning board meeting, that Makepeace, if you remember Reed Custom Soils, they withdrew from Cape Cod Ready Mix. They're now looking at possibly going next to the Ocean Spray, what is it?
Receiving plant?
Receiving plant. They're looking at going behind there. So they'll be coming possibly to see you informally first. I haven't seen a statement. That's all.
Okay, the next thing is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, everyone.